I will call or order this, the regular meeting of the Board of Education, which was duly noticed on June 20th, 2024 through the posting and notification to the press in accordance with Wisconsin statute 1984. So let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. How about we get that Navy man to start us off today?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I did think we were in the same branch. I can do that. One of the interesting things is that when summer comes around, we take a lot for granted. And in light of some of the things that have happened recently, the Sunday on the south side, we can't do that. We have to exercise more caution. But there are many things besides the thunderstorms, tornadoes and that, the extreme heat. If we're near water, you're on vacation, rip currents. Be aware of what they are and that. And remember a few safety hints. Be prepared for anything by checking the weather before you head outside, no matter where you are. Lather on sunscreen anytime you're outdoors. Wear the right clothing and accessories. Pack a refillable water bottle and a first aid kit. Probably one thing that we do fall down on. Be diligent about water safety because a lot of us do hang around the water, even if it's only fishing. Know the risks and signs of heat exhaustion. They sneak up on you and they do happen. And I know I was stationed in the south, in San Antonio. I think Kevin was too, for basic. A lot of the people, they're the soldiers and that, passed out. And we didn't know what we were looking for, but we learned. And then one, one final thing. Know your safe places for storms and other situations, wherever you may be. Always know where you should be able to go. So that's just all I can do good for this, I hope, and everyone remembers it. Thank you.
Thanks, Carl. Next, senior, senior citizen comments, Krista White.
I'm new at this, so do I need to state anything else to begin with? Okay, Krista White, 4131 South Tracy Road. All right, and my issue is basically has to do with the decline of Parker High School and how it has gotten to that point. First, I'm a 20-year resident, been a teacher, was a teacher there since 2012. And then I have four children in the district. And I chose Parker High School in 2004, started having kids in 2006. Olus will be a senior this year and she, you know, I was excited to have her go to Parker. And then now when it was time for her to start, the statistics are there. I have documents to share that. It's all public information as well. But the statistic that I found the most, I guess alarming or supportive of, you know, how did we get here? How did we let the school get to the numbers that they're at? But also there are things on paper that, not on paper, that are of concern as well from working there. And as a parent of this year, I'll have three girls at Parker High School starting in September. But the most concerning, like I said, is the ranking within the district. It's 21 of, or 20 out of 21. You'll see out of 23, but those schools have an NA, so they don't, they don't even have a ranking. So, you know, to be at the bottom of this, you know, in the district is also of concern. And this has nothing to do with the teachers. In the handbook, it states that there's one person in charge of the building. And so it starts with the leadership. Also with, you know, staff. Of the things that I know of that are happening in the school, you know, why hasn't things been brought up sooner? There's fear of retaliation and job loss from staff, many staff that know. And then a list, a healthy list of people that have experienced what I experienced with, which is textbook bullying from the leadership there. Now, why have we not, you know, who's, whoever's in charge of evaluating the principal, you know, along with the statistics and then things that people hear, but are too afraid to come forward with. I just feel like there's no more time to waste. Like five years ago, there was no more time to waste. But now with having more and more invested in Parker High School, I'm requesting, I don't have access to computer and printer much at this point or right now. So I would like to submit a letter digitally to meet with the board to discuss things further as I have a lot of supporting evidence for what my claim is or issue is right now in the district, which is trying to get our schools going in the right direction, specifically Parker High School.
Anybody else wish to address the board? No? All right. So we'll move on to 4.1. Consider approval, a motion to consider approval of the June 25th, 2024 consent agenda. If it's okay with the rest of the board, I'd like to pull off the athletic code piece just for a moment. It's okay with you two guys on that motion? So the motion will be to approve consent agenda except for that one, 4.6. Okay? We gonna vote on the screen? Sure. Now, we're just learning. We're just getting through this.
I felt like Jeopardy music should be playing right now or something, just to fill the void.
Which one? I don't remember what the one joke.
It's the only one you told me. I didn't know you had more.
Maybe I have one good one and that's the only one. I gotta save that. I can't use that in public places. Exactly.
Online's voting, everybody?
Well, there we are.
Yeah. In the winner. That passes unanimously, eight to zero. Commissioner Ardry is absent. All right, so 4.6 was the athletic code, activities code. And I just wanted, you know, I read through it. I just wanted to make sure. I thanked Jim and his staff for all that hard work, a wonderful, comprehensive plan. I think it's easily understood. And just, I just wanted to bring that up. It's, I think it's a great thing to include all activities after school under the same philosophy and behavior and responsibilities and results of your actions. And other ways to, you know, for especially where the service work to regain some potential that way too. So thank you for all your hard work on that. Looking forward to more and better, great things. We get lacrosse coming this year, so I'm looking forward to that. So I just wanted to say thank you. Yes?
Thanks for pulling this off because I, I spent a lot of time looking through it too. And I want to also express my gratitude for these significant updates. In the past, I looked through, just when I had some questions about activities or athletics, and I felt like maybe some of the requirements were not as in-depth for expectation. So I think this is really, you know, bringing our students together with higher level of expectation. One thing I, the change, and this is, I don't want it to sound like wimpy, but I, as a mom, I sometimes know what it's like when your kid is having lots of late nights. And one late night for an activity is one thing, but two weeks in a row of being at school from 7:30 to 10, 7:30 in the morning to 10 o'clock at night, not one night, but many, is a lot. And so there is a balance of mental health and performance. And so I do get a little nervous about, you know, what happens when your, your kid is at the breaking point and they may need to get some sleep because they have been literally at school for 14, 15 hours, for days on end. So I, I think I just am imploring that there might be some ex, we're looking at some of the expectations that we're placing upon some of our high school students and making sure that those expectations are in alignment with what is also healthy for them physically and mentally. So, you know, I, I don't know what the answer is because every sport and activity is different. But I, I just really worry, having been recently in a situation where I know kids were really struggling. And so I, I don't know what the answer is on that, but I, you know, I think, you know, where, where is that balance? And sometimes these students are, who are in multiple activities and sports are high achieving academic students. And so, you know, we want to support them as much as we can. So anyway, I'm just, that's just kind of the, the little message. I don't know what the answer is for that, but if there is a more strike of a balance that we can help with, if you need more feedback on that, let me know. Thank you.
Anyone else like to comment about that? Okay, how about entertain a motion to approve updates to the student athletic code of conduct effective July 1st this year? Motion is second? Next item, 5.1, long-range planning update.
All right, this is going to be the Dan and Mark show. I'm the first tee up a little bit, talk a little bit about what our goals are for the presentation. I'm going to turn it over to Dan. And we have some experts if we need to continue to ask some questions about conversations. But in the big picture, I'll take us back to this long-range facility plan. And, you know, the idea about where we are today is because we did this plan. That plan came back with $579 million. I think we all agreed, that's too much. We've got to pare that down. So we made some changes to that and, and reduced that to, I think it started to be, you know, ones and twos was in the 300x million dollar range. We also agree that that, that was still more than we were comfortable with. So the core team, Dan and his team narrowed that down and started with the base plan. It was 169.5. We sent that out to our surveys and our survey people kind of came back to us. And if we use the math, not just the raw data in the survey, based on the information, and Dan will share that a little bit, we came back and said, yeah, our operational planning looks solid, like that 14.5, it doesn't mean that it's a shoo-in, but the public had some support, positive 62% was their number. Our facilities planning looked like it fell a little short, didn't mean that we shouldn't do anything, but we should do something a little bit less. So from, I don't remember what that date was, that's two weeks ago, right? Two weeks ago till today at 2, I suppose. We've been working to refine what that 169.5 might look like with some, with some additional refinement and then officially a recommendation so that the board can ponder. Again, when I say recommendation, it's just a place to begin. I think we give you some options, we'll work through those. And at the end, we'll have a conversation and discussion about what's the next step potentially for the administration. So I hope that we have a good conversation. We'll work through the slides, we'll talk a little bit about what our model is tonight. My hope and goals for tonight and the future would be that by the last meeting in July, I think that's the 23rd, the board would vote on a resolution that all the board would approve. What numbers those are and how exactly they're worded is what we want to work on between now and the next board meeting. Hopefully, we can get some really good direction tonight. But if not tonight, we got to get some really good directions on July 9th. Is that our next meeting, July 9th? Because we really need to be able to make a decision so that we can at least start to communicate internally and to our public about what we're asking for and what that looked like. So I will just kind of remind folks that we did spend a lot of time on a strategic plan and that strategic plan shared our new mission statement is to partner with our families and communities and inspire and empower all of our students to achieve at the highest level. And so part of that is like, well, how do we incorporate that into what we're looking at? Those four key areas I continue to think are very positive, students excellence, staff excellence, and the third one here is this operational excellence. And we have to make some upgrades in order to make that happen. And in order to do that, we've got to have some great community communications and partnerships or we're not going to be anywhere. So our goals here is really, at this point, we've looked at the winter and we identified those priorities. Here we are in the spring, we need to refine those. So hopefully by this July 23rd date, the board will be able to have agreement on what we're going to move forward to the public so that they can, we can put together a resolution so that the, the public can give us the final feedback in November. So I'm going to turn it over to Dan and he's going to walk you through some of the details and the numbers so that you have that information and in the end, that be part of that conversation. So thank you.
Thank you Superintendent Holtzman. You've seen a lot of this data over the years and months preceding tonight's meeting, right? So we'll go quickly through it, but certainly if you have questions, like we'll entertain those questions, of course. And then at the end, you'll see a slide that says questions and it's really, I think, the intention to have more of a discussion. And Superintendent Holtzman will facilitate that and certainly we're available for any questions. Do want to recognize we have some partners in the audience tonight? So three gentlemen from Epstein Union Architects, Mike Johnson, who's been the lead estimator on this work, the pre-construction manager, so to speak, is actually off this week, so unable to attend, right? And our friends at Point of Beginnings, who have assisted with some of our civil as well athletic assessments, right? Were unable to join us this evening, right? But we have really great partners between JP Cullen, EUA, and Point of Beginnings. Regardless of where our future takes us, we have really good partners. As you know, on the survey, and as you know, we have an expiring referendum at the conclusion of the 2425 school year, right? So we need to prepare ourselves potentially for a referendum for operations on a non-recurring basis for the board's consideration and to perhaps be placed on the ballot in November. Keep in mind, right, in reviewing, not only for you who are very knowledgeable, but perhaps for the viewing public, right, it's really to continue to maintain small class sizes, right? Avoid drastic reductions in programming, continued investment in technology, right? And then we have our ongoing expenses. Keep in mind that this year, 2425 school year will be year four of a non-recurring referendum valued at 14.5 million and that expires, right? So the timing of that referendum was critical for us. We didn't rely upon Esser, so to speak, to buy groceries. We had an operational referendum in place, right, to carry us through the issues related to the state funding of schools. And I think we're going to cover some data points related to that as we move forward. Also, keep in mind, our approach has been always under the guise, if you will, of a multi-phased approach. Superintendent Holtzman referenced, right, not only $578 million in deferred maintenance, but we also need to take a look at the educational adequacy, right? How are we instructing students today in buildings that have been built in the past, right? And that pushed nearly 400 million, right? So if we take in the aggregate, right, there's over $900 million worth of needs, right? And we pared that down to 169.5, a little bit of a blend, right, between maintenance as well as some improvements for special education and I'm drawing a blank, interior safety. Thank you very much. So when we go back to that initial assessment, sorry, I got a little bit ahead of myself, 578, we boiled that down as Superintendent Holtzman referenced to 356 and identifying the ones and the twos and further refine that to approximately 136 million. We'll quickly go through these. Again, you've seen this slide deck before and focusing on what does phase one look like? Phase one really is targeted, if you will, kind of at a systems perspective, such as our HVAC systems, right? Such as Americans with Disabilities Act compliance, I would say that's a system. Roofing is a system, electrical systems, right? So mechanical, electrical plumbing systems, ADA accessibility, as well as some additional improvements throughout, such as bleachers and other things, right, are part of that 136 million. Again, keep in mind, we added a portion for interior security measures. We're very grateful for the community's support of the 2020 referendum, not only operationally, but investing in our secure pathways. This is really taking our security to the interior of the building, right? As well as focusing on students with disabilities or special education spaces. This is kind of an example. This is not illustrative of one of our buildings, right? But looking at those, if you will, compartmentalization while still allowing, knowing that we have a retired firefighter in the audience, egress if necessary, right? But the whole intent is, should there be an issue, is to really slow down, right? And allow law enforcement if needed to respond, right? So that's kind of the ideal of the interior security measures. Right, so special education improvements, right? So our most vulnerable population. So you may say, well, I thought we were focused on maintenance and we also looked again at the educational adequacy of some of our space. So really taking a look at security and special education, again, kind of our vulnerabilities or our most vulnerable populations, taking that aspect of the educational adequacy or the learning environments and adding them to that base question of 169.5, right? If you think about it, asking in a supplemental question about security and special education, you know, people I think would assume with, well, is that not a no-brainer? Why would you even put that as an option? Which is why we blended that together to create the 169.5 base package. Again, getting a little ahead of myself, I need to click a little bit faster, right? We went through the survey process and again, as that last bullet point notes, is we needed community feedback, right, for you as a board to assist in your decision-making process. We did a community survey back in 2020 related to the secure pathway as well as the operational question. So again, community engagement, if we go back to the mission, vision and values we have, even before we perhaps formalized them, community engagement is essential to our work. Survey results, you've seen these, right? I'm not Rob Demuse, he did an exceptional job, he and Scott, right? So we'll go through these quickly, right? So when we look at the operational, and Superintendent Holtzman said, okay, it's 61%. We still need to do our due diligence. We still need to engage, we still need to communicate the need because we don't want people to feel as though that's in the bag, so I won't go out and vote, right? So we need people to vote, right, on the facts that we'll be presenting them. If we go back, right, and so give me a little bit of grace, I would say our last operational referendum passed at approximately 54%, so this is trending higher. Then we move into kind of the base plan, right? So not quite, just shy, right, of we'll say the 50% plus one. There is a margin of errors, Rob shared with you, right? Plus or minus 1.75, so not quite there, but yet we gathered, and I think this is the next slide, right, we garnered, I should say, that there is support to do something, but what exactly is that? Let's go back here. When we look at our secure pathways, our boilerwork and our life safety systems, right, that passed in the very low 60% margin, right? I want to say that was about 62%. I should have reviewed that number before standing here, but I'm fairly confident in that can give me a plus or minus margin of error of 1.75 and I think we're good. We also surveyed, as you know, on three additional topics, right? Career and technical education, elementary classroom updates and athletic projects. And those surveyed fairly well, all right? But then we're getting into what is the tax tolerance when we begin to add all these things up, right? But very standard, I would contend, right? When you have kind of next level projects for consideration, you want that community engagement to provide some direction, not only relative to phase one, but also like into future planning and future phases. So when we get into the facilities funding support, right, this is kind of where the rubber meets the road, right? We have, you know, three groups. Rob did an exceptional job, as did Scott, in terms of explaining kind of the weighted averages for that, right? So we're looking kind of at the overall or that top bracket as we're close, but again, we're just not quite there, right? And you guys were really receptive and very engaging, so thank you for that when School of Perceptions reported the data. Community survey takeaways. Okay, just to recap, we had over 3,200 respondents. That's great. Rob talked about that and whether it's statistically valid, and it is, right? Strong support for the 14.5 operational referendum. Potential facilities, as we addressed, not quite where we want it to be, right? But yet still interest. And so that's the challenge that Superintendent Holtzman outlined that we've been working on in terms of, do we lower that dollar value? Is it the aggregate value or is it the mil rate impact? And the answer probably is yes to both of those questions, right? And then additional projects tested well, but most likely future phase projects for us as a district. The revised, if you will, phase one. And keep in mind, you'll see a word here, and I think you've seen this word in some of the correspondence with Superintendent. of the correspondence with Superintendent Holtzman, right, is we're deferring, right? These are identified issues that we've already scaled back, right? There's nearly $900 million of work that can be done, right? So it's not as though, well, we will never do that, we're just deferring it to a future phase. But we need to get to that point, right, in fiscal planning, you know, as well as phasing, right, what is acceptable to our constituents. So we're really kind of looking at themes or systems, if you will. So when we're looking to reduce it to the proposed 151.8, that's a 10.4 reduction over the original 169.5. And deferring, if you will, roof replacements, interior finishes, windows and doors. It's not every window, not every door, but we're looking at, you know, aspects of that house, right? So there'll be a new door in the district, just not as many as we were originally hoping for. Similar with roofs. Keep in mind, and I think Mr. Millard, with his experience knows this, is we have probably about a $60 million asset that no one sees, right? It's above us, district-wide. We can't do $60 million worth of work. I think originally, we identified about 8 million, right, but we have to scale that back, because we're looking to get to an acceptable target value, right? Restroom fixtures and partitions, there will be some work, probably a substantial amount of work, but we're scaling that back. Have to give a really good shout-out to EUA and Mike Cullen, Mike Johnson from Cullen, excuse me, married him into the family, and he doesn't even know that, right? In terms of really going back deep into that data and seeing where there's some blending and crossover, right? So sometimes you say, we're doing so much square footage, and we're doing fixtures within that square footage, right? There's probably some overlap, so Mike went back and withdrew some of that overlap. There will be improvements in restroom facilities. Mechanical system components, can't do everything, right? Again, huge need, trying to bring that back to what is tax tolerable. Outdoor and athletic activity field maintenance, right, that is out. But yet, we still recognize the fact that we need some improvements, and we can't wait, right? So that's where, again, I'll applaud the board's decision back in 2015, we've created a Fund 46. It's not an unlimited amount of dollars, right? And we have many priorities, right, but we may need to say, okay, what from a maintenance perspective can we do, right, to address some of the concerns that we have related to our outdoor athletic and activity spaces? And then, we've done a really good job, again, we have good partners, and, you know, we're fairly smart administratively, if I may say, right, in terms of utilizing our 2020 referendum dollars. So you'll see a little bit in the future, right, meaning the next slide or so, a component that we withdrew out of the 169.5, because we have appropriate dollars within our remaining dollars in our referendum, to absorb that expense, that further reduces, again, from 169.5 to 151.8. Phase One, this is kind of summation, right? So what is within the 151.8? 124.5 million, addressing critical building needs related to maintenance. Another 11.1 to further improve interior security and safety measures within our buildings. And 16.2 relative to special education learning spaces. And this is where we're taking, oh, it's a $2.8 million reduction, sorry. The one above, it's a $2.7 million reduction. The 2.7 is where we're using some of those remaining referendum dollars. When we look at that $2.8 million reduction, so you understand, right, you know this, sorry, it's a K-12, 4K-12 learning environment. So we're really focusing on the special education investments at the elementary level, and scaling back some of those investments at the secondary level, right? And the thought process behind that is really focusing on even our younger, most vulnerable population. Now we get back down to, if you will, okay, the magic question. So what's the estimate, right, in terms of the cost for this work? So currently, right, it would be $81, right, on a $100,000 home, right? I think the median household value, I looked this up probably a few weeks ago, is just north of $260,000 in Jamesville, right? Now, right, good luck, you're telling me, if you can find a home for $260,000 in the city of Jamesville within the district, right? So market is certainly driving that, but that's the medium, half are below, half are above, right? So again, $81, $100,000, right, multiply that by three, right, and I believe we're at $243 on a $300,000 home, right? So you may say, well, where were we before? We were $1.2, right? So keep in mind, and we talked a little bit about this finance, ad finance, I should say, right, and I think we've shared it over at many meetings, is there are some assumptions when we're modeling the fiscal impact, right? It's a 5.5% interest rate. We work with Barrett as our financial advisor, right? That's a little high, you know, Mike, can you be a little less conservative on that? He goes, right now, rates are about 4.25 from a bond issuing standpoint, right? I would be uncomfortable going below 5.25. So we've changed that interest rate model from 5.5 to 5.25, right? So Barrett has a team of economists, they look into the future, they're certainly far brighter than I am, right, but I'm comfortable, if they're comfortable, with 5.25. There are many other nuances that we won't get into relative to funding and tertiary aid, right, and all that stuff, right, that I'm putting people to sleep on, right? But right now, we can say, we're comfortable modeling $81 for a $100,000 home. It will most likely be less, right, but we can't say it will be less. So we're modeling a very conservative assumption in our fiscal planning. Keep in mind, right, the other assumption, I would say, is this assumes a 1% growth in new property value, not existing property value. Our existing property value growth, right, has not been exponential, right, but it's been very high the last three years. And you take that value, and that's what drives the mill rate, right? So very conservative also, in terms of our new property growth at 1%. So it gets a little tricky, right? And this is why we have two-hour finance committee meetings, you're all more than, you know, happy to chime in or attend, if you would like, right? But there are other components that we'll review in the future relative to the overall mill rate. That too is built on some assumptions as we model into the future. So this is really the discussion point, right? So I'm here for questions. Superintendent Holtzman said, we have some partners, if you have some questions, right? And certainly Superintendent Holtzman, and he'll close, right? So this isn't the end, right? So there's some next steps that he'll review, as well as chime in for the discussion.
Thank you, thank you very much. So with this new recommendation, you talked about, you know, deferring or being a little bit more judicious about which projects we do, like which roofs we do, or which improvements we do to certain classrooms or whatever. And one of the things that we talked about the very, very beginning, and it seemed to be important to the community, was equity in our buildings. So what does that do to that whole equity issue? I mean, if one, you know, if one school gets a new roof and another one is still leaky, you know what I mean?
Yeah, that's fair, and that's where all 578 million would be helpful, right? Right, so, you know, sure, I think when we look at equity, right, and if I may, right, and, you know, you're the boss, right? As I would say, what we try to do is every school receives an expenditure, right, based upon administratively what we believe to be the need within that particular building, right? So we have 12 elementaries, right? So our decision or our recommendation is not to do mechanicals at six, and then get the next six or five at Phase Two, right? Because then we're asking those parents, those students, those staff, right, to hang on for another four, six, eight years. So our equity lens, right, and hopefully you're open to this interpretation, is we're focusing on systems at the elementary level as best we can, right? We have $60 million in roofs, it'd be nice to have $60 million in roofs, right? And then everyone would have a brand-new roof, right? But we have to make those difficult decisions, as we have been over the years. So hopefully, that gives you some perspective or lends into kind of how we've gone about our decision-making. Similar to elementary, at special education, are we reducing that at that 612 level? We are, right? But we have to get some movement, but really focusing on what does special education look like at the elementary level. We also know, as I look to your left, right, Commissioner Dahmerhausen, we've tried to maintain the integrity of our investments in our theater spaces, right? So we didn't say, well, Craig Theater, can you hang on for another four or six years? We're doing Parker now, right? So when we look at systems, and yes, we'll say athletics is a system, right? Did we reduce outdoor athletics as a system at both schools? We did it at both schools. And if we look to addressing, we'll say, some of those even more immediate needs out of our operational, we'll also do that, and I'm just throwing out a number. If it's a quarter million at one, it'll need to be a quarter million at two, may not be the exact same quarter million dollar investment, but we need to be equitable from that standpoint.
Yes, how will we be seeking community input on this new proposal?
That's a great question. I don't think at this point, we're seeking additional community input, or we have really time. The community input would be those people who are listening and communicating, would be giving feedback to the board members and our commissioners as we go. We definitely wouldn't be able to go back to do another survey. So I think the idea would be, Dan, if you would roll back to the slide where it has the line in the middle, 15% of our non-parents, non-staff, that yellow, said yes, but less. And so I think what we're, there's never an absolute, Commissioner Johnson, I mean, there's never an absolute, so I don't know the absolute answer. But the idea that we're, I'm probably hanging our hat on, is that we're going to reduce what we asked, the 169.5, to try to generate 5% to 7% of the people on the 15 who said yes, but less, to say, well, they did their due diligence and they made that 169.5 less. And that's, and I don't, I don't know a better way right now, in light of trying to meet the state requirements for the board actually having a question, and doing it on, in November. So I think, really, there isn't another feasible way outside of people communicating to myself at the district or our commissioners about their opinions moving forward.
So if I may, just to get the ball rolling here, based on past conversations that we've had, the nine of us, I believe we have a consensus agreement, at least to direct administration to proceed developing the language and resolution as it's directly related to the operational referendum. Would that be? Okay? You got that one?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So then, like Commissioner Johnson started the conversation, and that's exactly where we're here today, is based on what we know, what we've learned, and what we have heard since the results have been rolled out with the survey, it's, my best assumption is, we have to agree on a number, what that's going to look like. I mean, that's our challenge. And the memo actually gave us a couple other options as well. So that's, I guess, that's really our task tonight, if we can get there, to agree on a number, to direct administration to move forward or not. So is anybody willing to have, consider the, yes, go ahead, Sue, Susan?
And remember, I do understand how greatly in need we are. However, you know, when people tend to see that big number, like 151, it's kind of a, it just, it just seems, it's not a positive perception, okay? It seems pretty large to many people. And just as when realtors price homes, and they look to see, okay, we'll think about the perception of the people, and we need to, you know, we don't want to list this at a little over 300, we'll just list this at 295.9, how about that? So, and that perception is very important in real estate. So I'm wondering if there would be a way to get the number under 151, just slightly, somewhere in the 140s, something like that. Just, that's just my first thought. I mean, I had been thinking along those lines, because to me, my main goal is to get this over the finish line, and to get the most critical needs met. And so that's, that's my goal, to get it over the finish line, and however we can do that, we need to do it. Thank you.
Go ahead, Carl. Yeah, Susan has some good points there, but having been on the finance committee for more than 12 years, we've gone through some pretty tough times, and we keep putting off things, keep putting them off. And we say, this is the most critical, we put them off till we get very critical. And I thought, one of the things working in the public, I do it two different jobs, what I hear from people is somewhat of misinformation. We do a good job of trying to get it out, but today, and I look at the referendum that was run for the high schools, and that, right after the turn of the century, we only had the newspapers, pretty much just the newspapers, and radio. That's where the information came from. So it was pretty consistent in what went out, and that today, we've got social media. We use social media and do a nice job there. But the problem is, an awful lot of people are out there just listening to a lot of stuff. I don't know how many people approached me, since this has come up, that we're asking, our referendum, we're asking for a half-billion dollars. I don't know where that's coming from. And I ask them, where are you hearing that? It's on the internet, rumors. We started to get into a lot of rumors, and that, I think we've tried to cover base as well, but we have trouble, keep cutting, pushing things back. If we remember the survey, well, why didn't they cover these earlier? Why didn't they take care of them before? Why weren't they more judicious in what they did, and how they spent the money? Well, if you remembered in, what was it, 2010, 11, I forget the year now, it's a way back, somebody told us how to spend our money, and took a lot away from us. So we had to be judicious then with what we had. Today, I don't know if they, what do they say, the rooster come home to roast? We have to take care of these things, and it's very hard to cut anymore. I think we've done a wonderful job at this. There's technically almost a billion dollars worth of needs in this district. And to cut it down to less than a half-billion, and then cut it again down to 170 million, and now trim it again down to 150, we're putting things off. What are we going to take care of these things we put off? Someday, we have to take care of these, and we have to step up. I don't like spending, watching, I rent now, I don't, I don't own, but my rent will go up. I accept that, because it's responsible, and we have to be responsible to our children, to our taxpayers, and everyone. I believe 170 was very fair, all the way around to everyone. I know there are people that have a hard time, I go through a hard time at times, but the 151 is cutting again, and people want us to cut even more? At what point do we say, ooh, wait, the roof's going to fall in, or something else, whatever it may be? I understand athletics, we can't put that much into, but we need to put some into it. We need to do a lot of things. So I think our administration has done a heck of a job, going out there and finding and defining what is needed in this district. I hope people feel that way too, that they have trimmed technically from 1 billion down to 150 million, and that. And hopefully, what we put off, we'll be able to pick up someday in the future. What that may be, I don't know. So thank you, that's my say.
So I support your recommendation. I know you guys put, you guys are the experts and you put a lot of time in this. I agree, I wish it would have stuck at the initial, I don't want to cut it anymore. Carl made a lot of good points. I think the key's going to be in the messaging, that's going to come next. So I do support you guys moving forward with getting the questions drafted. And I just think strong consideration and expertise will be having to take place in the messaging. We know these age groups, we know who they are, we know how they like to be spoken to. You know, and if you just speak to that, you know, yeah, we're making the schools safer, we're going to address special ed and, and facilities doing the best we can. I think that's going to be the key. I don't think you need to talk to any more people, I just think you got a message to the ones effectively until, until November.
Carl, thank you for sharing, but I just want to make sure, summarizing, that you would support the, that you are supporting the administrative recommendation?
Of 151.
Yes?
Yes.
Thank you.
I just want to take the time to, again, share my gratitude. I reiterate, we do have a very intelligent administration, but we also have, for those in the community that may be listening, really good partners who are really well-respected in their regions, in their communities, and they know what they're doing. And by that, I reference Point of Beginnings, JP Cullen, EUA, they're all well-respected. And at some point, we as board members have to understand that they're the experts. And for us to give you back recommendations, two weeks ago on June 11th, to go back and, but all we use, sharpen your pencils, that was really difficult in a two-week span. So I just want to recognize our partners and our administration for all the work that they did. I think a 10% reduction, that's huge in my book. I don't like 151 either, Commissioner Johnson, but 10% is a huge reduction. And I'm actually fearful of what you are putting off. But I, I do have to trust in the fact that you all took a deep dive, I still have that really deep binder, and really just figured out what needed to be raised to the top, I mean, the top top, so that a roof doesn't fall in. And so I would support 151 million dollar referendum.
Yes, I, I agree that an incredible amount of work went into this whole process, and I'm very grateful for it. And I, I certainly can see how, how you got the numbers that you got. And I, I appreciate the fact that the estimated tax impact will be under $100 per 100,000 of property value. The thing is, is that I think we still have to be concerned about, you know, the referendum passing. So we want a referendum that can be passed. And, you know, we do have, we have to think not just about the, the school district, even though that's what we are here, but our voters will, are members of a larger community. And they will be having pressures from multiple, multiple sources, such as the city, the county. And I, I think we need to really think about our voters, because that's the people who will allow us to, to have the referendum in the first place. So, and I, as a new person, the one piece of information I have for you that maybe you, you're not aware of anymore, because you've been here a while, is that, you know, I've canvassed at a lot of homes to, to get here. And I, I was just shocked by the number of homes that I knocked at and the, the person answered the door, and she, she or he were a little bit older, like me, and they, and I said, hi, I'm running for school board. And they're like, oh, I don't have any children in the schools, I don't care about the schools. I mean, see, that's the, that's the thing there. There's so many voters within the, the city of Janesville, and also then in our, the towns that feed into our school district that, that don't have children or grandchildren in the schools. And so in terms of messaging, I would say you need to work really hard on that then, because you need to reach the most very difficult people. Thank you.
Right, so, so there's a lot there, and we're very appreciative, if I can speak for Superintendent Holtzman, right, of, of the discussion. If you go back to, and this is really, I'm kind of maybe stealing Superintendent Holtzman's, you know, next steps, right, is I think some of the thought process, right, of asking the board for you to direct administration this evening, is to allow time to craft those resolutions, right, to again, see what the overall fiscal picture of the district, you know, looks like in the future, right? Because we will have our July 1st aid estimate, it's not the final estimate, but it's an aid estimate, right, July 1st, right? So factoring some of these things in a consideration. But by acting on July 23rd, that allows, right, for our partners and us to really begin, and we're already beginning, right, but to really start to communicate as soon as we can, right? So please keep that in mind. So we have to have a resolution, if the board so chooses, 75 days prior to the election, filed with the clerks, right? So allowing us more time, right, to communicate out the need, the investment, if you will, in our schools, right, is under Superintendent Holtzman's leadership, while we're looking at that July 23rd date.
So I just need some clarification on what we're doing here tonight. Are we just trying to get a feel for the acceptance of the 151? Or are we asking the administration to draft the language and then we approve it? I'm not sure exactly what the process is.
I believe our task is to give administration concrete direction on a concrete number tonight, if possible. And then they would go back and engage all those people to draft a question. I'm sure it'll involve some attorney work and make the proper language, and then it would come back to us to approve those two questions to go on to the ballot.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. So I just, yeah, I just was, didn't feel very clear about that at the moment. So I really appreciate the work that was done here. And I'm glad to see the estimated tax impact to have dropped significantly per 100,000. And I think that, you know, we, we obviously have, by, by deferring some things, I feel that we are not treating this action like, like a, you know, just an open checkbook, right? Just, you know, I think we're trying to be mindful of what our absolute needs are and, you know, and go forward from there. And I think, you know, I do, and I, obviously, I'm knocking doors now, these days too. And I do hear some concern about taxes, you know, and things going, and not all of it is attributed to the school district. But, but I also hear from a lot of people about how important our education is and how, how important our schools are to this community, even from people that don't necessarily, I mean, I get that too sometimes, I get that from people, that, well, I don't have kids in the system. But I, I think if we dug deeper with everyone, they would realize that if the school system is, is lacking, then, then other things become lacking, and then their quality of life is diminished as well. And so, anyway, so I mean, you know, this is, this is a difficult decision. You know, I don't take 151 million lightly, and I, you know, and I know that nobody on this board does, but I would support this. And I really appreciate the effort to, I mean, trimming 10% is, is a lot of money from that, you know? And, and I think it, like I said, a significant drop in the estimated tax impact from what we had before. So thank you.
I wish the support for the 169.5 had been there. I mean, I'm disappointed, because I'm in the schools, I'm, as a parent, I'm on school property two times a day, at least, and interacting and using the facilities and seeing behind the scenes and knowing when things don't work. So I'm not removed by any level. So I am sad about that. But I am very grateful to everyone in the community who took the time to complete the survey. I am very appreciative. I know that there are a lot of people that, for whatever reason, didn't do the survey and would very much show up and support for our school district, because I work with those people every single day. And I have a feeling that many of them just didn't get around to filling out the survey. So I feel really confident in, in what we're going to see from our community. The messaging just has to be there, and I know that we're going to do it. I know that we're going to get the people who are going to come and advocate for our district and our students and our community. So I wish, I wish I could be moving on that number. I mean, I'm not going to lie, but we got it, we got, our, our community needs us to take as best care as we can, and we need their help, because we don't have the funds to do it without them.
I think you have your answer.
I make a motion to recommend an adminis- So I will direct, make a motion to direct administration to write a resolution for us at the July 9th board meeting for a 150, 23rd, sorry, July 23rd, for 151.8 million dollar for facilities referendum question. And direct administration to write a resolution for the 14.5 million dollar operational referendum.
A second.
There's a motion and a second? Sure. You want to do a roll call?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously 8-0, Commissioner Arndt is not present.
Okay, if I could just close on like what our next steps are, so everybody's clear on, on where we are. So, so first, I just want to say again, thank you to Dan and the team for working through the process and providing you with this option and your support in that. We will then draft what is called the resolution, and we'll keep you in the loop all along that process. But the goal then would be, on the July 23rd meeting, the board would then vote on that resolution. And I guess what I would want to say to all of you is, if you have some apprehensions along the way, let's have that conversation earlier than later, because again, you have the right to vote any way you want. But if we're not in the same mode, it will be really difficult for us to pass any referendum. So if we're, ah, I'm just not feeling it, or we want to do something different, let's have that conversation before we have a six to three vote on the 23rd. I'm not saying we would do that, but that, that would be really hard to pass, right? So if you have some questions, we can make those conversations and, and talk about that on ninth? The ninth? So we'll have that, you know, as a, as a just update operational. And again, I thank you for your time, and we will, we are definitely in the mix and have a long-range plan for communication. And we too believe strongly in trying to provide operations and supports for our kids, so we're going to do it. We'll get it done.
Don't shoot me, Patrick. But at that July 23rd board meeting, is there any way that we could see a draft? I mean, I think what Commissioner Johnson and Commissioner Hayworth had said is very important, and we have the information on how we want to message and communicate to certain target populations, so that the messaging is there. Is there any way that we could see a draft? Not asking that it would be final, but could we see a draft of what a communication plan?
We've already started a plan for communicating, so we will be able to share some information with you.
Even if we as commissioners could have that along the way from, from July 20, so that we feel that we kind of know what the direction is, I think that would be helpful for all of us.
Just FYI, we have weekly meetings right now with the core team, and there's also, in addition to the core team, a communications team that has weekly meetings. And that's how we got this presentation put together, from the core team and the communications team. And those folks will continue to meet on a weekly basis to make sure we have all those things, and we'll keep you in the loop, absolutely, we'll give you a plan.
Yeah. Good. We have something on the next board meeting, put on that agenda to kind of have a little, any discussion or questions we need, or should we not? I'm, I'm all for it.
I won't be at the next board meeting, but that doesn't mean you can't have a conversation without me. So I'll, I'll have a conversation, I have a meeting tomorrow with the board president, and we'll talk about the July 9th agenda.
I'm just thinking about the language for the operational referendum. And it is my understanding that there is not an anticipated tax impact, because it's just continuing what we've already done. Can that be included in that language, so it's very clear to our voters? I don't know if that can be included, I know it's really particular in the legalese, et cetera, but just throwing it out there.
My short answer would be, I don't believe so. But we will ask the question. I believe the question has to be very specific in what the board is asking the public to support, whether there is, and, and I would also say, when we do write the question for our operational capital, the dollar amounts are there, not the tax impact. So we don't put, it's 151.8 million, and it's, that's our messaging, we have to help them understand that ahead of time, it's just the total amount, so. But we'll, we'll message that.
Yes, I do. So real quick, because I know the evening is getting long, we did have an update on the long-range planning, you know, so we're always trying to keep the finance buildings and grounds in the loop. No really different information than what was shared with you, just really pretty much a lighter version, letting them know that we're working on it. Tammy Carlson, who is our fiscal analyst grants manager, did an outstanding presentation on the Esser projects. Keep in mind, we're working at Franklin, and the two greenhouse projects are also Esser-funded in addition to some Fund 10 and Fund 46 dollars. If you have an opportunity to drive by either of those two, right, what we did this year is a QR code, right, so someone, if they have a smartphone, can take out that QR code, it will direct them and provide additional detail in terms of the Esser funding and support of those projects, right? So too much to put on a banner, but a lot of information on the webpage, to which again, if you take a snip of that QR code, you'll be directed to. We did an update on the 2024-25 budget development, right? So we'll have, if you will, kind of a continuing resolution or preliminary budget approval at the July 9th board meeting. I'm landing at Milwaukee Mitchell Airport at about four, so my backup is our capable director of finance, Matt Sylvester Knutson, so he'll present that, similar to what we did last year, a very high-level request for a preliminary budget. We also had a quick update on our property liability workers' compensation policies, right? So the marketplace is very challenging for us, and we just actually bound coverage this week. So we are seeing an increase, right, somewhat anticipated. It's actually- Um, it's actually a reduction in our workers' compensation dividend by approximately eighty thousand dollars, right? That's a budgetary impact in the next year revenue for us, the twenty-five, twenty-six. It's a dividend, you did a great job, you get a dividend. Um, workers' compensation carriers, not only ours, but many across, I don't know, the state, the world, if you will, maybe not the world, but the country, right? Are scaling back. We were at a forty percent dividend, we're moving to a twenty percent dividend on our workers' compensation. We went back out to market and no one, in terms of the nearly eight other insurance carriers, would go above a twenty percent workers' compensation dividend. Property is also increasing for us. Think hurricanes, I'm not quite sure, right? But property carriers are a little persnickety right now and that is impacting our budget, right? So you'll get maybe a little more detail on that in July. Um, and then we did an update on student transportation. We have a very strong relationship with Sam Bangelder, Inc., right, which is a division of Coach USA. I'm sure you've read Coach USA has filed for bankruptcy, right? Um, I always want to say Raycom, but it's not Raycom. They have a suitor, they're going through bankruptcy filings, right? So most likely, Sam Bangelder, Inc. will be purchased by a new suitor. Um, I asked Al Fugate, he was very good in calling me and the district before news broke, right? That they're a very viable entity here in Janesville from a profitability standpoint. They'll most likely go out up and will have yellow buses to run in the fall, right? So again, we have to go through the legalities, right, of a bankruptcy hearing and divestiture of Coach USA's assets. Um, and then, uh, you know, future committee meetings, uh, we will not be meeting in July. We will be meeting in August, we'll most likely be meeting at Franklin. Uh, we'll take some time after that meeting to tour the Franklin updates because we'll be close to being completed, right? As well as we'll probably hop in our cars and check out the greenhouses at both Parker and Craig.
Go ahead.
Um, I just want to do a little bit of a post-June eleventh farewell. We, we failed as a board to say goodbye to Dr. Bob Schmiley, that was his last board meeting. So I just wanted, on behalf of the Janesville School Board, to thank him for all of his years of service because we failed to do that at June eleventh and that was his last board meeting. So, hope you're enjoying your retirement.
Future meetings?
You're all looking at me. Um, July is a little light on meetings. We have two Board of Education meetings. The first on Tuesday, July ninth, at six PM here at the ESC. And our second Board of Education meeting will be on Tuesday, July twenty-third, at six PM here at the ESC.